Good afternoon, everyone. We have gotten together today for our work session for September 23rd. And before we start, we do have a quorum. And the meeting is hereby called to order. Let's have a moment of silence. Dr. Lancy, will you lead us in our pledge of allegiance?
Yes, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have a seat?
As we all know, we're going to be talking today about the studies that the staff has provided us, and I hope everybody had a chance to read through it. And what I thought we'd do is have Dr. Winborn, however he wants to do it, or his staff, present the different studies and sections. And then, once we get through with each section, then we, you know, anyone that has a question, clarifications, and so forth, we'll go like that. I know this is a difficult topic, but one that we have to tackle. And as long as we think about what's good for our children, as well as what we reasonably can do, I think we'll be okay. And everyone, just if someone has a different opinion, that's fine, too. We want to always be respectful. So I turn it over to you, Dr. Winborn.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon, Board members. Good to see you all here today. I want to first start off by thanking the members of the team for working so hard to pull all this information together in such a short period of time. And I want to apologize in advance that I was not able to bring with you any additional information about the elementary school. As you had requested, we simply ran out of time. But we will continue to work on that and get that to you as soon as possible via email, certainly in time for you to give it full consideration before the October meeting. So apologies. So I thought maybe we would start first, just refreshing ourselves with the timeline. Mr. Conner, if you could pull that up for us. It's one of the exhibits in Board Docs. So we are at the work session, September 23rd, and we're pretty much on track. Tonight, we're going to share with you, it says draft number two, but really, this is the first draft of the study, which was based on the report. And so this is, these are the draft of the legal document that is required for making these decisions. And then tonight, if you'll scroll up just a little bit, Mr. Conner, so you can see the headings of those columns. So our role as the administrators, Mr. Conner, if you'll scroll up just a little bit, so I can make sure I'm, so I'm going to be able to see the heading of the columns. Yeah, thank you, okay. All right, yes, okay. So tonight, the team, we're going to share, we're going to walk you through these studies, okay? And we're going to do them one at a time, section by section. And as Ms. Williams said, just stop and we can have conversations or make observations, you know? We don't have a PowerPoint. We're going to use these and just talk, walk our way through it. And just, again, interject, pause. This is the opportunity for you to give, like, hey, what does that mean? I would like to see more information about this, whatever, you know? So that we can then take that feedback from you and then rework that into what I hope will be a final draft that we can bring to you at the October 7th meeting. So this is our group effort to make sure you have all the information you need before you see the final version of these documents. Any questions about that?
I will add that, once we finish the first one, we'll take a short break. But of course, if anyone needs to get up.
As you can see, Dr. Hamm is joining us tonight, too, because he plays an integral part in considering this information. And behind me, on the wall, we have large versions of the map. So during the break, or anytime you want to get up and look a little closer, and you can write on them, draw on them, whatever you want, just an extra way to help. These three on the left are high school option one, two, and three. And then the middle is a map, just showing where all of the schools are located, so you can kind of get an idea of your bearings. And these are middle school options one and two. And these are for the attendance zones. And we brought you options so that, because there are choices that need to be made with this. And again, we'll dive deeper into that. So just start us off, and you can follow along either digitally on your computer or on the, in the document itself. But I'm going to start with study number one. And the team and I, we discussed this. It's very interesting, because study number two can't happen unless you do study number one. So they are interdependent. Obviously, if you don't close Granville Central High School, you can't move Holly there. So, and as we get into some of the different parts of the study, you will see that there are things that are connected. In other words, where the attendance zones are drawn impacts staffing, which impacts enrollment, which impacts course offerings. And also, there are, Ricky Heinzel will talk about the finances. Even these two studies are kind of connected. She's allocated the savings and/or expenses in one column, excuse me, in one study rather than the other. But it's not double counted. We made a real effort to make sure we weren't counting savings or expenses in both. It's either in one or the other. So with that, we'll go and get started. The first, it's on page two. This is the language that Ms. Dubison provided us many years ago, just kind of providing, you know, what's the basis for all this? And we have, Ms. Shore has joined us, Principal Shore from Holly. I asked each of the principals if they were available to come by tonight, just in case anyone had any questions specifically for them. So Ms. Clark and Dr. Allen may also be stopping by. But I know each of them had busy afternoons, so. And I believe you have to leave a little early, too, for your family, but that's all right. Thank you for coming.
My pleasure. I'll be here.
So page two, the legal context. This is the same information that's in study number two. Ms. Dubison, I think you spoke to this the last time. Do you want to maybe, anything you want to reiterate here or point out to maybe those that are listening or who might watch this later?
Sure. So the brief overview is just that boards of education have the authority to close or consolidate schools whenever they determine that it will better serve the educational interests of the school system. But before doing so, there's two steps that are required. They have to cause a thorough study to be made, which has five required elements, and then have a public hearing where the public can express their views on the proposal.
So again, I think we have satisfied those criteria within this document. So then, if you go onto page five, it just kind of gives the historical background of the school. Many of you have probably read this already, but, you know, I get asked sometimes, why did they build Granville Central High School? You know, we don't have enough students. And if you go back and look in Board Docs and read the minutes from the board at that time, they were responding to, you can see on page six, the projections for the student growth and the capacity of the two high schools at that time. And this was right before charters began to take off. And they were using data that showed a pretty steady increase in the population of Granville County at that time. So it certainly, there was a lot of urgency on the part of the board to try to find capacity for these kids, because they were, they were packed at Webb and at South Granville at that time. And, you know, putting a high school in the middle of the county seemed like a very logical thing to do. And they were also trying to be very frugal with the dollars, because they didn't have enough to build a single enormous comprehensive high school at that time. So they built what was called in the minutes, a starter high school. And so it was just the core classrooms and the main office and a gym. And it was designed, you know, to hold, I think, about 600 kids when they started out. The cafeteria was a little small, but they built it in a way that was easy to add on, too. So that was the thinking back then, in case you're asked, or people are listening and are wondering, you know, how we found ourselves in this situation. And then, of course, in 2014 and '15, the addition of the, at the school was completed, where they added the CTE wing, they did some renovations to the interior, and added some athletic facilities and some arts facilities. So that was a huge upgrade there. And it increased the core capacity of the school to almost 1,000 students. So again, there's just more information.
Did that correspond, did that correspond pretty close to when Oxford Prep started?
It was right, it was before we had any charters in Granville County. And the first charters were just opening up in like the Raleigh Durham area. And at that time, you know, it was difficult. I don't see how the board would have been able to imagine where we are now, you know? The legislature at the time, for those of you who remember, charters was sort of an experiment. It was supposed to be very limited in its scope. And I don't think a lot of people understood the impact it would have had. I don't know how you would have. And also, the growth projections were very aggressive for Granville County. So, and I think that was right around the same time they changed some of the restrictions about the watershed around Falls Lake, and how, you know, the density of housing and all that stuff was, and discovering the issues with Suwasa and their capacity, and just a lot of unknowns.
Perfect or satisfied?
Yeah. I think, remembering, I think the projection back then, for the county was somewhere around about 2, 2,500, 3,000 kids over the span of time when the actual charters came, it went down about that much.
Yep. Yes, sir. So moving on to page nine, this is just a summary of the actual enrollment for Granville Central and sort of the trend in that capacity. And you can see right on, in the 15, 16 school years, when they opened up the new wing. When they started out in 2007, oh eight, it was ninth and 10th grade only. And then they built each year. So that's why there were only 370 children that first year. And then, here we are this year, and I believe that number of 539, that's the 20-day, so we're at 54% capacity at Granville Central High School. Any questions? So moving on to pages 10, 11, this, you saw this before. This is just general information, talking about the benefits of consolidating three high schools to two. You know, everything that you can get by being more efficient, more course offerings, enhanced extracurriculars, you know, more staff, which, you know, gives you more opportunities and more services that the students may not have had previously. And then just some other kind of qualitative measures that could happen as a result, you know? A larger student body is going to mean a more diverse group, probably, and more interesting student population, more richer experience for the kids. You know, by offering more courses, you would have more advanced offerings, which could increase the academic rigor of the school. And the bottom part, though, says there's still some challenge, there's challenges that can occur as well. It's not, it's not all a bowl of cherries necessarily. Yes, ma'am?
Could you speak to number five, because I find that real interesting? Stronger academic culture, maybe what you know about?
Sure, yeah. So I, and Mr. Perry may want to chime in on this, but right now, at our traditional high schools, we only offer maybe three AP classes?
Not very many that are face-to-face.
Yeah, face-to-face, two or three.
And the enrollment is low.
Right.
Because of the number of courses that need to be offered for graduation that are required, that are non-honors courses and non-AP courses.
So if you were to, yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I was just saying that enrollment in those courses, the upper-level courses, is lower than it is in traditional level courses.
So right now, it's probably just AP English, AP Calc, and maybe AP Bio?
Bio, I think.
Civics.
Civics.
That's South Grand.
Yes, South Grand.
Whereas, you could offer maybe both of the English APs, you could offer maybe a calculus AB and BC, which it used to be the case. You could offer Biology, Chemistry, AP Chemistry, maybe even a Physics class, which we used to do AP Economics at one time. And then more honors sections. Right now, a lot of our students, when they take an honors class, they're in the same class, the same actual class period as the regular students. So the teacher is responsible for kind of
Doing both.
Teaching the two groups at once. So they might have different assignments when they're doing the same activity. It's very difficult to differentiate that. So.
And that's, excuse me, Dr. Winborn, that's also the case for, I can think particularly an art course, for upper-level art?
Yeah.
That they're being taught with the, maybe the two or threes are together in the same course.
Yeah, upper-level electives, upper level, for foreign language, too. Because right now, we just have Spanish I and Spanish II. You could do three, four, Spanish AP. Maybe you offer French, maybe you offer another language.
So the courses will be offered through North Carolina School of Science and Math as well, for those AP courses and some other advanced courses. And some of them are offered through other programs, virtually or asynchronous, asynchronous, asynchronously, excuse me. Some are synchronous and some are asynchronous. Couldn't get it out.
And I mean, not only are the students, you know, being able to take those courses, but it makes them more competitive to get scholarships and get in better universities or whatever programs they're interested in, you know? We have an AP Computer Science class, I, you know? Thank you for that question, Ms. Williams. Page 12 has information about the demographic breakdown. This is the current demographics for the schools at the start of this year. Chris and I talked about this a little bit. It's very difficult for us to know, okay, what would these be if we, if Granville Central were closed? What would the new demographics be? Well, the answer is, it depends. It depends on which attendance zone you choose, and it depends on, we haven't looked at the outgoing 12th graders, and then which 9th graders come in. So that's, would require a pretty deep analysis. And we can try to, you know, maybe estimate what that's going to be, but at this, without knowing more about the attendance zones, it's really hard to do. And then, of course, page 13 is that same information we shared with you before about, this data comes from the county. And basically, their growth projections indicate that there will be 33 additional students per grade level added across the district by 2030. And that's pretty meager growth, right there, for school-age students in our schools. And that's not based on our data, that's based on the county and their planning.
Is that taking off the percentage for the estimate of charter kids?
Yes. So that last paragraph, assuming that the ages of individuals are distributed evenly within that range, that would equal 42 individuals per age year, so 42 kindergarteners, 42 first graders, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And then if you say, okay, 80% of the kids are coming to us, 20 are going to charters, that would take it down to 33 kids per grade level by 2030. So that's, that's not per year. That's, in the next six years, we would only be getting about 430 new students.
And that ratio decreases every year as well.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what we're, that's what we've been seeing. Even, even though we haven't added any new charter schools, that ratio is going down.
More like 75, 25, or three to one.
Right.
We also have no idea at this point how the voucher program is going to affect us. So that could also be a negative.
Negative impact.
Probably not as much as far, but let's do it.
Yeah, so again, the big takeaway from this is if we're, if you just look at the data the county has, it's not forecasting a lot of growth of new students in our schools. And we certainly saw that this year with kindergarten enrollments. Is that right, Ms. Curran?
Yes, definitely. We are down significantly kindergarten across the board.
So any questions about anything on page 13? Well, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Perry, and he'll dive a little deeper into the academic section, show you some specific numbers there.
All right. So, good afternoon, everyone. On page 14, you'll notice that we start off with a chart of the projections for the 24-25 school year for all three traditional high schools. And you notice there the 10-day numbers for a total of 1768. It also provides information regarding the number of teachers that are earned based on the ADM numbers and that enrollment. So you see a total there for all three combined schools for 65.5 teachers, the number of CTE teachers, JRTC arts, and foreign language listed there. If you flip over to page 15, imagine there were two comprehensive high schools in A and a B. You just kind of split that number down between the middle, 281 students between both schools. This is the number of teachers that will be earned for both of those schools. And you can see there what that distribution would look like between the number of core teachers, career and technical education teachers, foreign language, and arts that could be offered at two traditional high schools. And of course, these numbers are dependent upon the attendance zones and what's, that selection there and what's adopted by the board. If you look further down the page, on page 15, you'll notice what our current CTE offerings are at our three comprehensive high schools. Moving to two, what we could offer there. If you notice there, it's an increase in the number of career and technical courses that we can offer students in those, in two comprehensive high schools. So an increase in the number of ad courses, what we can offer for business, finance, and marketing, project lead-the-way activities for computer science and technology education. Culinary arts would be offered at one site because of just the makeup and the facility of the schools that could be offered there at JF Webb. Also, information regarding health sciences being offered at both sites and automotive entrades.
So, Mr. Perry, those are not course names necessarily. Those are sort of clusters, right?
Yes.
So there might be...
Like Pathway, like the CTE Pathway?
Pathways, yes.
So where you see culinary arts, that might be three or four courses, right?
That may be Foods I, Foods II, yes. For our exceptional children, with dual consolidation, we could offer more robust, robust servicing for our, for our students, because we have consolidated these schools down into two facilities, whereas our staff will be able to provide more intensive support for those students based on the staff and that's available at that school. So those kids, those kiddos will be able to thrive in that kind of environment where they will have a more inclusive environment, in a diverse environment, where we can really provide some high-quality service to those students. Right now, it's kind of stretched between the number of schools and the offerings and the facilities and the people and the human resources that we currently have. But bringing that together would, could help reduce some of that. Same for our AIG and our English Language Learners as well.
Can you talk a little bit about the challenge with ESL at the high schools? Well, because that's tough right now, isn't it?
That's tough, yes. Right now, with ESL, that's probably one of our hardest positions to kind of staff there. So, and being able to provide those students with the support that they need, it becomes a little tricky. So you really need the number of staff members to be able to provide them with the intensive support that they need in order to exit that program, so they can continue to grasp on to the, to the English language. So having the adequate staffing and services that are, could be available to those students would be ideal at our two comprehensive high schools. Right now, we're just kind of stretched thin between the number of schools.
So they're kind of splitting, right?
They are split.
So no one teacher?
No one teacher's at the individual school all day. So between the, and the increased number of students that are actually enrolling into or requiring services has increased over the years. So, but this, the number of staffing has been flat.
Have our numbers of ESL students been increasing each year?
It has.
Significantly?
I can't say significantly, but I can provide some data
Pretty steady.
Over the years. I can, I can do that.
Mr. Perry, what, we have increased in SROs with two high schools, up three for enrollment purposes?
I'm going to defer to Ms. Curran on that one. That's, that's on her wheelhouse. I think that will come further into the conversation.
I can wait, Ms. Curran.
Well, there are already three in the city limits of Creedmore, so even, even if we go down to two schools within the city limits, it would, you know, I don't, I don't think it would be too far-fetched to imagine that they would still be willing to maintain the number that they have, hopefully. And that would mean that if we have one at Granville Central already, then that one could probably go to the other high school. I would love to have two SROs at each one of our high schools, especially if it's going to have increased capacity.
Fantastic.
I think the, the big difference would be that, that now we have SROs that are assigned at multiple schools, and so it would eliminate multiple schools, and more people would be assigned at only one school. So we, we might not necessarily increase the number of SROs, but their coverage could increase.
Would you like to see some additional information about ESL students in this category? Just like the trends? Okay. Yeah, again, if, just stop us, and if there's, you know, if you want something added or clarified or whatever, we can put it in.
Do any of our high schools have self-contained EC classrooms?
Yes.
Do you want to expand a little?
Excuse me. Yes, we do have self-contained classes at our high schools. I can't tell you the number off the top of my head, but they are there.
All three of them, though, have self-contained?
Not at South Granville. I know Webb and Central.
Yes, Webb has two and Central has two, right now.
Okay.
And then, South Granville has OCS classes, which Webb also has OCS classes. But those classes were moved from Granville Central to South Granville this year, just based off of numbers and where our students were located.
Thank you for that.
Will you back up and explain, just for everybody that's listening, to what self-contained and OCS mean, just generally?
So our OCS courses are occupational courses studies for our students who are not, they're kind of mainstreamed into the educational environment, but they require additional services through EC. Our self-contained students are those students who are, are tier-three level of students who are receiving exceptional children services.
Are those students, if I'm not misunderstanding, they are able to stay in school till age, what, 21?
A little bit longer, yes.
Until the year they turn 22. Thank you.
Any other questions?
That takes us, unless there's any questions about academics, that takes us to Courtney with HR.
So if you see on page 17, the information included here is the total number of teachers we have at each high school currently. So these are positions. If there's a vacancy, that number would be included. But these are the positions that we currently have here. So you can see we have 20 at Webb, 21.5 at Granville Central, 27.5 at South Granville, for a total of 69 teachers. These are not CTE, EC, or ESL, though those numbers are broken out underneath, so you can kind of see the distribution there. Then we have the ROTC, school counselors, all the other positions, custodians, teacher assistants, those are broken apart between EC teacher assistants and non-EC teacher assistants. So those would be things like our Dean of Students, ISS teacher assistants, those types of positions. types of positions. Child nutrition staff at each school. The, the largest number you will see are the athletic coaches, both the head coaches, including the athletic director, our band director and chorus director. Four purposes of those positions, not their main teaching position, but for their director positions are included in our coaching scale. And so that's why they're included there.
And that's because, that's like additional duty, right?
Correct, yes.
So it's not counting the classes that they're teaching.
Correct. That is not counted. They would be up in the ADM number for actual teaching positions. So the individual person might be counted twice. For the coaching positions, those are actual positions. So if we have one coach that serves as the, you know, head track coach and a football coach, that person may be counted twice here, but they're two separate positions. We're paying them two different times for two different things. So that's why they're broken out that way. And then the assistant athletic coaches are there as well, well.
Can we pause right there? Because I, when I first saw this, I was really kind of surprised to see how high those numbers were. And I know that there have been conversations in some of the committee meetings that this would be an opportunity perhaps to revisit our coaching...
Pay scales.
Pay scales, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yep.
Yes.
You're on the same...
Yes.
And our athletic director pay scale, right?
Yes. Well, and also, you know, these numbers don't include Title I or, or, they do include Title I and equity positions there, too. So that's important to note, and that, there's information about that on page eighteen. But on page eighteen, you could see the staffing with two high schools. Now, again, just like with Mr. Perry's numbers earlier, this would be with the assumption that both schools had equal number of students. So of course, these numbers would be impacted by how many students are actually at each school. But you can see there's a significant efficiency reduction in each area, just based on how many students are actually at that school. And what it really shows is how we are overstaffed in some areas now to be able to provide what we provide.
I would really like for us to be careful, though, in calculating the reduction in coaches, because this is, all of these high schools are, are operating with like little to no JV teams. And so the, part of the purpose of this, I mean, I remember way back when Mike Carroll first, first came to the board, and he was talking about how we need JV teams to grow our programs and to prepare our athletes to be able to safely compete at, at a higher level. And so I don't think this takes that into account, is...
They are. JV positions are here.
With the addition of all JV coaches?
Yes. So the positions that are listed here are the positions that we have. They are positions that exist. It doesn't mean that there's a person currently in that position. So the JV football coach is included in that number.
I'm talking about being able to create JV teams for programs that don't have JV.
New teams, okay.
That's what I'm talking, I'm not talking about ones that we already have established that just aren't filled.
Right, okay.
I'm talking about the, the varsity level teams that we have that don't currently have JV teams.
Right.
That hopefully we will.
Right. Well, and that, that's one of the things, too, if you look at page eighteen, you know, there, there are positions that are saved in that area, but with the increased number of students, there's also the opportunity to offer additional sports that don't currently exist at both campuses, just based off of interest of students. So that might decrease the savings there, but once we knew more about what would actually be available, then we could revisit things like AD positions and those types of things. Okay. Now, the ESL and EC numbers that you see here, those are always variable, because it really depends on how many students we had at each school, where they would be districted. So those numbers are truly just taking half and putting them in the different spots right now. And let's see, that's it for that section. Anybody have any questions, additional questions about the staff?
I have a question. Going back to page fifteen, career and technical education, or how much is this going to affect our current offerings for any student that's already enrolled in a particular path?
It really shouldn't.
It should. So everybody should be able to get the same thing.
To finish their, well, with the exception of, for example, culinary arts at Granville Central, unless that student is transferred to JF Webb, where they, where a program could be offered at that school. It depends, I apologize, it really depends on that particular course. Those are isolated kinds of situations.
I'll also add that, you know, a lot of these programs with CTE at the high school level are driven by the qualifications of the individual teacher. For example, we have a teacher at Granville Central right now who teaches project lead the way engineering, and he had to get a significant amount of training in order to be able to teach those courses. So wherever that person might end up would...
Drive.
...end up the course offering. It's, it's, it tends to be very specific to their licensure and whatever add-on trainings they have. So some of this could change, which is why if you look on page sixteen, at the, at the last row, it says other trades. You know, you may be able to add a electrical course or a, you know, HVAC class or something like that.
Welding.
Harpentry.
Welding.
Welding.
I have a point to go back a little bit to what you were talking about, about, you know, junior varsity and schools. We do have them now, JVs at all three.
Not for every, go ahead.
No, we don't have them for every sport. We, we have positions that would allow them to have JV teams if they had enough student interest. The issue is not having enough student interest at every school.
Oh, okay, student interest, sort of like that.
Right.
And the reason I was thinking about that when she was talking about the consolidations here were, you know, let's say it's you and two high schools, and then the coaches and the assistants of those positions. If in fact, we start having more, you know, additional, that much more interest, would that number then, that you say we're going to be saving minus twenty, minus twenty, that would shorten that?
Correct. So for example, at our high schools currently, we do not have JV girls' basketball. So if you were to add JV girls' basketball, those teams, then those numbers would go down by at least one each.
Would we be placed in a different conference than we are now, or would we still be in the same conference based on...
My understanding is that our conference realignment is occurring very soon, and it would be based on current numbers. That is something I can look into a little bit more with Mike Carroll, but that's my current understanding.
Okay, thanks.
Would you like any additional information provided in this about athletics?
I don't think it's a whole lot we can control on, on all of the conference stuff, so I guess that will just have to be whatever it is.
Do, do we have any sports where the JV team is also bursting and would potentially allow for perhaps like a freshman team?
Not currently.
But with...
But it is a possibility. But generally, when, when that occurs, it's at a school with a very large number of students, more like two thousand students. So is it possible? Yes.
I just didn't know if we had any at this time that, where we were seeing like a larger enrollment in one particular sport than many of the others.
No. And really, if I were to completely guess, it would be something like basketball, volleyball, where there are fewer students who can actually participate, and so their teams are smaller in general, that that might be possible. There aren't any other questions? I'll move on to the next area. So page nineteen.
Can I, you made a point, this is, none of this includes Title I positions, right?
Correct. So the, this second page, that, page eighteen does not include Title I or equity positions, because we would have no way of knowing. And generally, our high schools are not Title I schools. They don't tend to get Title I positions. So from a facility standpoint, the combining three high schools into two could definitely be more efficient in that there would be fewer buildings, so the related cost of that would decrease. Space could be better utilized, you're maximizing the number of students in each classroom. Currently, in some of our areas, and you can really see this on the chart at the bottom of the page, currently, we have staff members who would not normally have a whole classroom. They would share a room, who now have multiple classrooms. We have some teachers who have up to three classrooms with their names on them, because they have a different classroom for each thing they teach. We have some programs, that the programs themselves have two classrooms, and then each of the teachers that teach in those programs have an additional two classrooms. So...
Are we considering like auditoriums and gyms as classrooms and that count?
We are considering those as classrooms, because they have a class in there, or could possibly have a class in there.
Okay.
Yes. So if you, if you look at our current numbers of the classroom spaces that we have versus what is being used, you'll see the percentages at the bottom on page nineteen.
So I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm just thinking about all the different, so like, for instance, the ag class at South Granville. So there's a classroom, and then attached to that is, is like a...
Shop.
A shop, thank you. That's, that's a good way to put it, a shop. So are we, are we calling that two?
Yes. We are. And, and part of the reason is you, there is space in many of those rooms to set aside actual classroom space in addition to the, the shop space.
An example are the auto mechanics shops as well. Both of the ag auto, auto mechanic shops, one at Webb, one at South Granville, in the past, they have always had a classroom space inside of them as well. But now, they're both utilizing, well, at least one of them is utilizing another classroom that is empty.
What do you see the effect on the band program at the two high schools? Which two high schools?
The, one possible is that the actual size of the band will increase, because students who are currently in band at Granville Central would presumptively be distributed out to the other schools, so that would increase their, you know, their number of students in band. Would it impact in a facilities way? No, because they're small bands for the space that they have currently. But could it increase the number of kids we have in band? Absolutely.
Are the libraries also being considered? Sorry, I'm sorry.
Yes.
We're not done, I'm so sorry.
I think increasing band size, I think about Webb in particular, they really look like they've made some progress in that area. And anything that kids can do in extracurricular is, is a, is a good positive step for them. So that might be a good thing.
Well, and the other thing, too, that, like, I know that usually tends to be popular when you have a very prominent band program, is usually then jazz band tends to be another kind of side benefit of that, which requires fewer students, but it's just like another really great pocket for kids to get involved in.
Webb used to have an excellent jazz band years ago.
But you ask about media centers.
I was asked, yes.
Yes, yes, they are. And again, the reason is, in the past, they have been used in, as classrooms. I taught your book at Webb. We went in the media center.
No, I'm glad, because I know that they are currently very underutilized spaces. And so I'm, I'm actually glad about those being included.
Yes.
Yes.
And Ms. Curran, I want to thank you, because when we looked at the floor plans of the schools, and we kept going back and forth, well, do we count this as a classroom, do we count that as a classroom, so on and so forth? She went and walked. Again, Mr. Gran had done this in the past, but she went and walked the campuses, again, and laid eyes on every space to make sure that we're not being inaccurate. And I think this is a conservative kind of view on this.
Yes. And it, it does take into account, you know, there are some smaller classrooms, there are some larger classrooms that can be utilized for, you know, different things like EC services and, and things like that. Any other questions about that part? Okay. So on page twenty, you can see what our current needs for roofing, HVAC, and then just the total needs of each facility, and kind of what that total amount is. You'll also see the net gain from the current holly campus being closed here as well.
So in other words, instead of maybe gain, you could think about like, that's money we wouldn't have to pay in the future, right?
Right.
Because that, that's outstanding work. So those numbers are within the next five years, and this is just roofing and HVAC, these are the big ones, right? And then the, the third line are kind of everything in the master facility plan, all of the outstanding needs, which include...
Paving.
Paving, windows, locks, plumbing fixtures.
Yeah. Doors that need to be replaced, a little bit of everything.
So that...
How will this consolidation speed up, or will the work on these schools just be done, like South Granville has a lot of these, period? So I know you have a master plan, and my question I get is, how is consolidation going to speed up, or is it going to speed up? The work that needs to be done on these schools that still need to be... Nobody...
Nobody heard it. I heard it.
My question was, on these schools that's going to be left, like South Granville, it has a lot of roofing needs and HVAC needs, if, when we consolidate, if we consolidate, how is it going to, is it going to speed up the work that needs to be done? I mean, you have a master plan that basically say that it's supposed to be done at a certain little time, but I think we are way behind.
So I think the answer to that, Mr. Peace, is yes, it could. Because right now, the, kind of the way that our master's facility plan is laid out, there are different priorities based off of what the need is, you know, how recently something has been done at one school versus another school. So if, if there are schools that no longer exist that would need that repair done immediately, those resources would then be reallocated to the schools that are open, that do need those repairs done more quickly. So while it would depend on the decision of the board about, you know, which specific place was no longer being used, or, you know, if it was sold or whatever, you know, came about with that, then the resources would be reallocated based off of the highest need and what is the highest priority for the district.
You're exactly right. And I'll even put a more finer point on it. This final column, that's two point one million dollars that we would not have to spend on the current holly school. And if you were to sell that building and campus, all of that money could then be put into the remaining campuses, or if you release it, or whatever. But that's potentially a very valuable piece of property that could, you know, then that money, like you said, Mr. Peace, we could get it, get on our, our schedule.
Well, you know, well, one of my concerns is that we do this, the county is going to still be responsible for doing what they haven't done in the past. So what's going, I mean, how is this going to twist the arms into doing what they haven't done? I mean, we, we're going to be doing a lot on our part, so what are they going to do on their part? I'm not asking you to answer that question, but if you want me to go down and talk to them, I'll be glad to.
Well, I think you make a good point, Mr. Peace. I, I'm very happy that they almost doubled our capital outlay this last year, and it, so it should be more and more supposed to increase each of the coming years. But even when you do the quick math, it's probably not enough still.
Well, you're going to have more free time in December, so maybe those are, those are the meetings.
I'm not going to spend it getting married, I'm going to be late.
County commissioners have public... County commissioners have public comment at their meetings.
You could be consultants, and you could hire consultants to go there and... I do think they are aware, they seem to be aware of the critical need we have for facilities. And even though nothing's been promised in stone, I think, I don't think that they want to get back into a situation where we have a Holly like we had. And when you look around the state, you see just about every year, some school system is having problems with all these roofing and air conditions and mold and all. So we don't want to go back to that kind of thing. So I'm going to be confident that they're going to do what they need to do. I'm going to try to be.
The problem I have with that is I've been around doing it since then, and advocating for trying to get stuff done. But anyway, we won't.
Answer prevention can be a pound of cure, right?
I guess my question is, as far as, because I mean, obviously, then we're looking... This is where the two studies kind of start to collide a little bit, right? Because then we've got, if you look at Butler Stadium Middle, which technically, we're not removing those students, right? But we're not releasing that school. But if we were to release Butler Stadium Elementary, like what? How much of their roofing cost is upcoming sooner rather than later? And that's, I mean, we don't have that paper yet, and I don't know if you have that time, but I didn't know if you have that number on you by chance, like off the top of your head.
There was a handout you gave us earlier this year.
At operations, maybe?
Yeah, we got it somewhere at desk somewhere.
I think I remember which one you were talking about.
It's talking about the plan, and it sort of put it out for so many years.
All the roofing, right, the schedule. Yeah. I don't remember the number.
I have the briefing for Butler Elementary pulled up. It looks like it's about $2.9 million approximately.
Butler Stadium Elementary. It's $2.9 million.
I get $5.2 million.
Total.
In years one through five. $5.2 million of cost avoidance.
That's at Butler Stadium.
Butler Stadium Elementary. But... Well, but if we, that's counting this year, and we... I need to push it out. Years two through six.
Ms. Kern, why, the woman was trying to find that information. Have we added in conservative needs for the tracks to be repaired? So they have needs on there. What's the price for that? I don't know, we probably shared it some time ago, repair those tracks.
So the athletic is not included in these numbers. But yes, there are needed repairs. There are not just track, there are tennis courts that need to be repaired. Many different things that need to be repaired at both schools, South Granville and Webb. So again, reallocation of resources could make those occur faster as well because they're pretty significant costs.
Ms. Kern, I don't mean to get in front of you on that, but actually, these numbers do include some athletic upgrades. Scoreboards, football stadium lights, bleachers, ballfields, but does not include track.
Right.
But other general athletic maintenance and repairs are included. So I redid the calculate, it's still about $5 million for Butler Elementary that you would avoid hospital. So I think it's nearly a million dollars to resurface a track with, you know, this nice synthetic surface.
And both tracks need resurfacing, is that correct?
South Granville and Webb both need significant work, yes. And it's not just resurfacing, it's drainage issues that need to be fixed as well. Both tennis courts need significant work. So the bottom of page twenty just has some additional information about the facilities, just the capacities of cafeterias, media center, information about who has an auditorium, who has a football stadium, those types of things. Of course, at South Granville, football and baseball is all one, but they do have one of the, you know, facility to play on, so it is included there. And then the tennis courts, you can see how many they have at each school. And then on page twenty-one, practice fields and auxiliary gyms as well. There is some information on page twenty-one about the special usage for CTE classrooms. So you can kind of read through all of that, but there are some options that would exist with those CTE classrooms, which would include, you know, some partnerships that maybe we could have with outside businesses or community colleges to offer specialized certifications in that area. Some workforce development that could occur, professional development for teachers. There's just, those spaces could become multipurpose spaces for our district and for our community as well. Does anybody have any questions about that? If not, I'll turn it over to Dr. Hamm.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. So when we were looking at trying to provide you some options for attendance boundaries, you've probably had a chance to look at the maps already. And you're going to see a lot more red than you are blue on these maps. But again, this is Geography 101, and we have to look at where our students live. So we predominantly have a lot more students who live in the southern end of the county than we do the north. So that's why you're going to see sort of a disproportionate amount of area for each of these options. So as we're looking at the high school options, I did come up with pros and cons for each option. So we're going to look at high school option one, which would be... And we like to use highways and different roads when we're making our boundaries. It's clean, it's easy to communicate to parents. We use both sides of a certain road or certain street, so we don't have kids on one side of the street going to one school, kids on the other side of the street going to another school. So when we started looking at high school, option one takes into account Highway 15, and it travels down Highway 15, and then where you see that left where the red takes over, that's Hester Road, and it sort of weaves over towards Old 75. And then that last little portion that you see go up there in the west corner, that's Range Road towards STEM. So that is how far we had to come south on those roads to get to that balanced number that we were looking for here for option one. So you can see in this, and these were based on current numbers, it doesn't account for any school choice or anything, you know, any population changes. Based on current numbers, this is the most balanced option, which would give us about 872 kids at Webb and 889 at South Granville. So they are looking at the pros. This is the most balanced enrollment between the two schools. There are no issues with building capacity. I have cons for all the options, and you're going to see a lot of the same cons for every option. There will be an unmatched middle school, high school feeder pattern depending on which options are chosen. There are potentials for more and longer routes in both the north and the south, mainly being we would lose some of our ability to do double routes in these areas. And, you know, we're still going to be transporting the same number of kids further in some cases. Our middle school and high school in the southern end would not be able to share buses, and that's going to be true in pretty much every option that we have. And then getting back to staffing, we already know we have some driver staffing concerns as it is currently. So it would be very strategic on where we transfer people to when we close these schools. So that is option one. Does anybody have any questions about that high school option?
So just looking over this from like the, all three of the calendar, or the maps that you've put together, I mean, it looks like those cons that are in this particular... Like it's no other solution is going to solve any of those cons, right? So I guess my question is, do we know what like the average and longest length would be for those routes? We don't, we don't have any way.
It'd be pure speculation at this point.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, when you look at enrollment for South Granville, how close is 889 to capacity for the school?
I think their capacity is about, what, 1,050, somewhere in that ballpark.
You talked about staffing issues, which is always an issue anyway. But do you see as one of these being more of a staffing issue than the other two?
That would be speculation, too. It's just really going to depend on where certain staff who have licenses are moved to.
Well, the reason I ask my question is because I'm looking at getting more blue instead, and that's red.
Can you address again the middle schools? They would not be able to be on the same buses, is that what you're saying?
Right, because when we share buses at Northern Granville, we have, that would still be intact for the most part. But we share buses in the southern end because the two schools are literally beside each other. When you start talking about eight or nine miles apart, unless you did something extreme with bales starting and stop times, that's really not going to be a possibility.
Thank you.
And when you're talking about the unmatched middle school and high school feeder pattern, you're talking about like, so all of the students that go to like GC Holly Middle School would not necessarily be able to go to, like all those students would not go to the same high school?
Correct, and that really depends on which options you choose down the road. Any other questions? Okay, and then to look at another option for high schools, so we took that same Highway 15 to Hester Road, and then we travel east on option two. And that goes Hester Road all the way over to 56 to give you an idea of how far south we had to come to even get anything to work remotely with capacity. So you can see in this one, we are at 821 in current numbers for Webb and 940 for South Granville. And again, when you look at the pros, you'd have access to a couple of good highways to bring those kids north. But you can see there's more of a lack of balance, and then, again, feeder pattern issues, and those same three bullets there at the end of what we talked about before with staffing concerns and not being able to share buses.
So the Wilton area would be?
In this option, that would be Wilton, Tar River, portions of Tar River that would be traveling north.
So you're saying that those are regular as far as they're traveling north to get to the school?
Yes.
Dr. Hamm, where would the group homes be going? Central and Oxford, or...
They would be going to Webb, I believe, in all of these patterns. Other questions?
Does option three put us at overcapacity for South Granville enrollment?
Yeah, we'll get to that in a second.
Oh, sorry.
But yeah, kind of.
I would really, so our current attendance zones for our current high schools, like I would like to see that added in here so that people can, we and other people can see how those would be impacted.
That's easy enough to get through, that won't be a problem.
Right.
Sure.
Or whatever, separate, so you can go back and reference, whatever's easiest.
Absolutely, that's, I already have that map, we can include that. Other questions about option two for high school?
Chris, am I mistaken that like, if you look at option three?
Uh-huh.
Is this, this includes... This is the current attendance zone matching. If you were to draw a line over this one, this would be around the same.
Pretty much, yes.
So just to your point, right, like that already comes down here, right?
Yes, I believe so, yes.
So you're all just going to draw a line over this one?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and it goes kind of slightly north over there on the other side, too. But I can definitely get those maps for you. Right. Is on that... Right on that point, yep. Right. All right, so we will look at an option three. I wanted to give you one option, depending on what you did with middle school, that you could have that perfectly aligned feeder pattern. So option three for high school is the exact same boundaries as option two for middle school. But you can see with option three, we have some capacity issues in the southern end of the county. So I don't know how great an option it is, but I wanted you to see what an aligned system would look like between those, if that's something that you prioritize. And to kind of explore how much further south we would have to come to make anything closer to that. So again, you can see the option three, this is just a copy of the middle school one. So again, the pro is the middle school boundaries would align if you chose middle school option two, but it is the most imbalanced of the three options.
So I mean, like, I guess analyzing all three of them, like the first con on option three, which is the most imbalanced high school option, seems like that automatically rules that one out. And then option two, the one that goes so far into the south and would impact not only just the middle school and high school feeder, but now also the elementary school feeder options like that, also now seems like that alone rules out option two. So you're basically...
Well, it wouldn't affect the elementary to middle, but it would affect middle to high. So the elementary to middle to high would change it for some students.
Okay, because it does say which would impact normal ES, MS, and HS.
Yeah, but it's on the back end of that. So traditionally, our Tar River kids go to Holly and then to South Granville. But in this option, it'd be they'd go to Holly and then probably Webb.
Okay.
So it's a more down-the-road impact.
Okay.
And we looked at this from several different aspects, and I didn't do this alone. Renee Gooch was instrumental in this. And also, we verified all of this with Kevin Hart, who's the director of TMS for ITRA NC State. He actually helped us draw all these boundaries. So we're not working in isolation in this.
I mean, I guess I'm looking at it to, like, if we're looking at it from what gives Webb the most benefit, option one would be, because it's already the larger of the two high schools. And so then, like, you're also putting, you're making sure that that has more students as well. You know what I mean? Because then if, I mean, if Oxford and Butler and all those continue to expand, and Webb can still handle it, whereas like if we're almost setting South Granville up, not for, I don't want to say for failure, because that's not the right word, but I mean, like, for capacity issues.
So we don't want South Granville to be like it was when I was an assistant principal there before Granville Central was built, when we had seventeen mobile units and six teachers with no classroom? So no, we don't want that.
Okay, thank you.
And we had to have seven-minute class changes to get kids through the hall.
I'm also like, I'm looking at option number two, and I... This is Wilton, and that's in Webb, it's in the Webb attendance zone.
I wanted you to see...
This is a mile from my house, like this is...
I wanted you to see how far south I had to come to even get remotely close to bounds.
Yeah, I'm following this down 56 and down that, and I'm like, that's, Wilton is in the Webb attendance zone.
Well, this is just, again, this is geography, just where so many people live. That's how far south I had to even come to have a remote option for you, other than just saying, here's the one you need to take, which I don't want to do.
Right.
So I mean, I mean, even on option one, Range Road is pretty far down Old 75.
Well, is Tar River in Webb as well, though, then, if Wilton is?
It is.
Yeah, yeah.
And looking at option two, though, when you're looking at going to Webb, the density of the population is more in the blue, it seems, than...
Right. Right.
There.
Yeah, if you look back at the report, Chris did have some maps that had little people icons.
Yep.
Scattered all over, and that, that shows the population density of the students.
I mean, because even currently now in the north, like, where Joe Toll used to be up 96, we travel a long way to pick up very few kids on a bus now. So when we start talking about efficiency and all, I mean, even at current Stovall, I'm running more buses than I should from a capacity standpoint. But even then, those buses are leaving at 5:30 in the morning. So if I ran them at capacity, Lord knows when the first kid would be getting on. So this, this is this balance between geography and doing what's right for kids and what makes, you know, is just logical to do. So we're sacrificing some efficiency to do right by children. Any other questions about the high school options? So we will add the high school map, the current boundaries for you all to see. Is there anything else that you need from me for that?
Did you want to ask about your map? Did you want to ask about the original map between the two high schools?
Well, and we could also wait, and when Chris gets to the part about transportation for middle schools, then maybe we could talk about them both together and how they work together.
Do you anticipate running less buses at the high school?
No.
Be about the same?
I think no matter what option we look at, at best, we're running the exact same number of buses. My concern is going to be, are we going to have to add buses? And that's more on the middle school side with, with Butler in particular. And we can talk about that more when we get to the middle school side of things.
Get our focus, you know, just looking at right now, like you said, you know, the first one that you started with Option 1, with the right now, you say 72 for Webb and 889, of course, that's putting it, you know, sort of breaking down the capacity equal. And then it, you know, definitely goes off scale as you look at Option 2, and then, of course, definitely Option 3. And keeping in mind, as we break these things down or you show this, that is what we're going to get most of the concern from the parents. Yeah. Very much so. I was talking to a parent not that long ago, and her son is going to early college, but he lives down on the other side of Stovall.
Right.
Yep.
Well.
Leaves home 6:00 in the morning and gets home 6:00 in the evening.
Oh, that's not the earliest we have either.
That's not even.
Well, I mean, early college is its own animal, that, I mean, you're, you're talking about covering the entire county.
Exactly.
With four buses for a school in the southernmost point in the entire county. And again, that bus probably only has 17, 20 kids on it.
Yeah.
And its capacity is 48.
Well, I'm, I'm not excited about any of the options that were brought to us. That's not your fault.
I don't take it personally.
It's the size of the county.
Yeah.
But we got to work with.
Yeah, land versus where people live becomes, I mean, it's just like when we went through this with elementary a couple of years ago. It's, it's just a challenge dealing with where our schools are located versus where our people live.
If we, it would be very easy if everybody lived equidistant throughout the county. I mean, you could just.
Absolutely.
Draw the pies and all, whatever. That's not reality.
And my, my cons may be too con right now. I mean, I'm not usually an optimist, I'm usually trying to be more of a realist. So I could be wrong, and it could be smoother. I mean, it's just, there's a lot of unknowns right now without, no, which, which exact boundary and who's going to ride a bus and who's not. So I could be overly pessimistic in my projections, too.
Well, looking, looking at options, you know, I, when I look at Webb at 8, I guess it's Option 2, 821 and South at 940, it seems like to me, we could increase it 940 some without doing too much damage to the 821. I mean, because the way it maps it up, like, it wouldn't be a, what's it, 2?
Are you talking about Option 3, Mr. B?
I'm talking about Option 2.
Option 2. I'm sorry.
But anyway, that'll take some more looking on my part.
Sure.
I need to ride a few roads to make sure I'm worth it. I mean, I'm serious.
Yeah.
There's got to be a better way, another way, I don't know whether it'd be better or not.
Interesting. The only issue becomes the further south you take that, that boundary, is, is the longer that bus route's going to be. And then you also have to consider where Granville Central or the new Holly is located in terms of that, and the kids right around it not being, it's a, it can get really complicated.
So with Option 1, those kids going to the middle school would be in what the high school district would be, basically.
Well, and that's going to depend on what middle school option you choose as well.
Yeah.
Ideally, if you look at middle school Option 1, I know we're not there yet, those are our current middle school boundaries as they exist now, just combining Butler Middle and Holly in the Southern End. Ideally, that would have worked for the high school boundaries, too, but it doesn't, just because of the capacity issue.
But I can see, like, on the, the eastern side, did you try to match, like, on the eastern side of, like, 15, did you try to, or 85, did you try to match the line for the middle school and the high school in Option A, Option 1?
On 15?
Yeah.
Well, then the problem would be, because I, actually, I made this mistake, and Dr. Winborn pointed it out. If we use 15, Holly would not be in its own attendance area. So that's why we had to go back and revise it to Bell Town.
I'm just saying that the lines look very similar. Like, if you compare Option 1 for the middle schools and Option 1 for the high schools, the lines on the right side look very similar, as do, and if you're looking at Option 3 for the high school and Option 2 for the middle school.
Oh, they're identical.
Okay. So you.
So, I agree.
Do you see what I'm saying on the right side?
Like, if this were high school, how long would that last?
I have that, actually.
Do you?
I do. Because that was an initial look that we looked at. South Granville was close to 1,100, I think they were at like 1094. And, and Webb was like 705. In my head, I was like, this is path of least resistance, it impacts the fewest people. But it just doesn't work from a capacity standpoint. So that's why we had to look at how we bring the boundaries south to try to get more balance.
But these new lines, do we eliminate school choice and we decide to consolidate? Would they have the option for parents or need to go where their, their kids live?
So the way the policy reads, school choice is an option only if there's capacity at the school. So we would allow it up to a point. So, for example, if, you know, you chose Option 1, and there were only 50 spots at South Granville, and you had 100 students that wanted to go there, we would have to figure out, you would have to give us some direction about how we manage that. Have everybody sign up and then have a lottery of those spots, or is it first, first served? How would we do that?
Save and put a new college.
Okay, thank you.
But I think.
So Option 3 is the only one that would be overcapacity, or right add.
Right add, yes.
That would be maxed, that would pretty much be maxed out.
Right.
So you would have to close it for school choice. But if you did Option 1 or 2, you could allow for some choice. You just have to direct us on how to manage that.
Do we know how much of our current capacity is school choice?
I do not, if I can get that.
Might be.
You can have that.
Good to have.
And the students who are doing choice don't get transportation?
They do not.
You said students.
Students who are voluntary transfers to a different school do not get to use a bus.
Correct.
Yeah, I'd like to see that, we were talking about how it would overlay what we're doing now, because it will show you how many kids more would be affected, probably.
So just, just so I'm clear, you want the current three high school boundary map? Did you want to see where the students live? Like, with all the population on that map, or just the boundary?
It's not too much trouble.
It's not too much trouble at all?
Yeah, that would be good.
Okay, I can get that for you. Would you like that for middle school as well?
Mine as well.
Sure.
Okay, I can get that.
Ready for the next section? Ms. Hines?
The good news.
Second to last section?
After that, we'll take a break.
The punchline, the money?
Sounds good, sounds good. This, this, what you see in the fiscal responsibility section is, is similar to what you saw in the, in the initial reports and in our prior reports. These costs are specifically for Granville Central, though. So as, as we look at those total 23, 24 costs of 5.4 million for Granville Central, and then the expected cost that would be continuing, and, and what's important to note is that those are the continuing costs, because we know that, you know, we have teachers that are going to still have to save, serve the same students. We have all of our staff, you know, a lot of our staff are going to serve the same students. The savings comes from the positions that are lost in that capital management chart that we saw earlier. The position, those position efficiencies in that, in that chart. So that's where you're going to see the savings, that's, those are the personnel savings. The operational savings, the operating savings, it's important to note that here, because the, the discussion has never been to just leave Granville Central empty, we included here the, the operating cost of the current Holly campus as the operating saving. So, so knowing that the cost of operating the Holly campus is, is lower than the cost of operating Granville Central's campus. But because that has been the discussion, that's what the amount that we included here. In, in the personnel costs that we're looking at cutting, the only amount that we've received specific funding for is that principal amount, because we get funded for a principal per school. So we would also lose that funding. So we're looking at the potential annual savings overall as 1.7 million by closing the Granville Central campus and relocating the Holly, you know, and ending the operating costs at Holly Middle School. And we'll look a little bit later about what that looks like year after year. But we're looking, again, overall at a $1.7 million annual savings. I did, because again, that Holly part of moving over to Granville Central is part of that conversation, we included, I included those costs in here as well. The anticipated facility costs of that move. And, and really, because we're talking about putting middle schoolers in a high school, there's not a lot of facility changes and upgrades that would need to be made. However, there is that cost of rebranding the school and the painting and the signage and all of that. So we've estimated that to be about $300,000. And then, of course, the cost of the relocation of students, of, of the Holly students to the Granville Central campus, we estimate at about $40,000. Part of, of what we always do is, is, is consider the carrying cost. If, you know, if the Holly campus is standing empty, there are still continuing operating costs that need to be considered. And in previous studies, we, we consider those to be about 25% of the current operating costs. And that includes the facility and maintenance costs and the utility costs. So those ongoing costs would, are estimated to be about 65,000. So what we're looking at on page 31, that chart with the financial impact over time, in year 1, we have the, if we close Granville Central, we have the recurring savings of 1.7 million. In that first year, of course, we have the remodeling cost of about 300,000. The relocation of students and furniture, 40,000. And then the recurring repurposing costs of, the carrying cost of the Holly facility. So net year 1 savings would be approximately 1.3 million. The ongoing year 2 and future years, you're just looking at the repurposing cost. So if we're still carrying the facility, the current Holly campus facility, then we would have that cost included. And so there's the potential ongoing savings, net savings of 1.6 million. And that is for closing Granville Central High School and moving the Holly campus over to that campus. Any questions about that?
Yeah, the remodeling, one time cost 302, 500,000. What does that indicate?
As, as, on the chart, it really, really just looks at the rebranding of the facility, because they're not aware of, of any major facility changes that would have to happen, because the students are roughly the same age and the same size. So that we don't have to change bathrooms and those sorts of facilities.
My, my, excuse me, my rebranding. You're going to put two schools in one. So my question, my concern is, what do you do? I mean, you, are you going to match, match these colors and everything here? So my thought was to leave it, leave it at Central. Leave everything like it is now.
Granville Central Middle School.
Yeah. They have colors, they, you know, you're not going to satisfy any of them. I mean, if you change it to Holly, you're not going to satisfy them. Mix Holly and, put them middle together, you're not going to satisfy either one of them. So if you leave it at Central, everybody will be dissatisfied after a week or two. After a week or two, they'll get along.
We do need to go back and look at what we talked about and promised as far as the Holly name. So I think, before we get too far into that, let's go back and research that.
Okay.
When we said it and what we promised.
So I guess my question then is, and I might be getting ahead of myself, but the, the, whatever that is, the adjoining space to South Granville High School that used to be Creedmore Elementary and is now the new Holly Middle School, and so, anyway, all of that. What is your, what would be your suggestion that we do with that property? Would, because it's proximity to South Granville High School, would we demo the building and hold on to the land? Or would you suggest that we sell that and, and recoup costs?
I think there's several different options. If we wanted to try to get some. If we wanted to try to get some much needed funds to address the shortfall of our backlog of maintenance, we'd sell it. The city of Creedmore might be interested in it. The county might be interested in it. I know they're, they're going through growing pains and need space in the southern part of the county.
Wouldn't they need to be offered to the county initially? I mean, don't they get first dibs?
I believe it, and I believe you're right. Yeah.
Yes. But they don't get it for free.
Well, they got the last one, but, so.
Do we know what the market value of that property would be potentially?
Not off the top of my head, but we can look.
We had included the tax value when we did the closure study for Creedmore.
Tax, okay.
And I think it was, based on square footage, it was something along the lines of six or seven million. Just for the, that's not market value.
And I'm sure if we do that, you know, just like what we went through with Holly, when the commissioners took that. But we definitely said, you know, we would keep us that, you know, things there to let people know, you know. Because actually Creedmore Elementary, a lot of people really, you know, upset about that. You know, you have to leave something there to let people know, this was history, this was history. Do the same thing, you'd have to sell it.
Any questions for Ms. Hines? So there's just a summary page, and it just kind of highlights all the things that were brought up in each of the previous sections. And Madam Chair, I don't know if you wanted to give everyone a break, a little breather?
I think so. We'll just take maybe about a 10-minute break, come right back.
Then we'll tackle study number two.
Study number two.
Should go a little quicker since, you know, it's, some of this information has already been outlined.
30% increase in the number of new students from 24 over the last 10 years.
I'm really not surprised.
From 570, 571 to, 572 to 743 last year.
That's about right. Oh, absolutely.
Okay, folks, we're back with, now we're going to get started on study two, both closing of Butler Middle STEM, Middle School and relocation of those students and relocation of Holly Middle students and their students to the old Gramble Central High School campus. And again, a lot of this information will be similar and have the similar format. So, turn it over to you, Dr. Winmore.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. So, this one should go a little more quickly. Again, I'll just kind of start walking us through the same information about the legal context and the different factors that must be included in the study. That's all there. The historical perspective of the school, there's really not nearly as much information in here. You know, this was pretty straightforward. At the time that this was built, back in 1998, the district was, you know, pretty much full at the old Holly and Northern Gramble. They were both busting at the seams in that capacity. And so, the board made a decision to open up a school on the southeastern part of the county. So, that was what happened. And so, there's an aerial photo and information about the site and the square footage of the school. And then on page six, you can see a history of, I'm sorry, we're missing a heading there. That should be percentage full, I guess, right? The percent of capacity. So, it started out right at 80 percent and it's continued to drop, with the exception down in 1920, it bumped back up and then dropped back down again. And we're right at two-thirds full today. And that's on page six. Many of the exact same factors should be considered. It's all about the efficiency and the expanded course offerings for our students. In middle school, this is true as well. Mr. Perry will get into that a little bit when he does his section. But, middle school students don't really necessarily have electives per se, but they have specials. They can choose to go to band right now. And we could perhaps expand and offer other choices in areas of the arts. I want to pause right here and thank Ms. Clark for coming. She's in the audience, Principal Ashley Clark of Butlerston Middle School, to show her support. And, you know, when I met with the faculty a couple of weeks ago following the last meeting, there were a lot of questions about, you know, what would this mean for the students? And her team had a lot of really positive observations to make about that. So, Ms. Clark, I want to thank you for coming. I know you can't stay long, but we appreciate you being here. Again, we included the demographics. Something to note that the Hispanic population at Butlerston Middle School continues to rapidly increase. Very diverse student body there now. Most of those students under the current feeder pattern end up going to Gramble Central. So, that's also the same. Page nine, it's the same information about demographics from the county. Just exactly the same as what was in the other study. Again, if I'm going too fast, just stop, see if you have any questions, or certainly if there's anything you need Ms. Clark to address while she's here. All right. With that, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Perry, and you can talk about the academic stuff.
Thank you, Dr. Winmore. Starting on page 10, you'll notice information about the current enrollment and staffing at the three current middle schools there with a total of 1,300 students among the three schools. That also includes a number of ADM teachers, PE teachers, arts, oral language, and the such. If you flip over to page 11, you would see what those predictions will look like as, or projections will look like if it's two comprehensive middle schools with the enrollment at, still at around 1,300 students, 842, and then 501. And of course, that is all dependent upon your enrollment, your attendance lines. The number of CTE offerings would be balanced between the two schools currently. We do not offer ag programs at, an ag program at Butlerston Middle School. Project Lead the Way is offered at Butlerston Middle School, but we can be able to offer both ag and Project Lead the Way, which is stem and robotics at both middle schools in addition to business. Again, just as before, the challenges with EC students academically and intellectually gifted students and ELL students with the consolidated middle school, the services that could be offered. The question earlier about the number of students that are enrolled in our EL program, and I did a little work while I was sitting here, went back and pulled the numbers for the last 10 years. Back in 2014, there were 572 ELL students. For the 23-24 school year, there were 743. So, that's a 30 percent change in the number from over 10 years. Any questions regarding the academic services that would be offered between the two schools? And of course, we will continue to be able to offer more robust courses at our middle school. In addition, for example, some of our students are taking some upper level courses through virtual, Gramble Online, for example, Earth and Environmental High School courses and middle school. We can be able to offer that to our students face to face, dependent upon the license of the teacher.
Okay, so if you look at page 13, that is where the human capital section starts. And so, again, just like with the high school, this is where our current positions are, our current staffing. And it breaks down in our ADM teachers, CTE, EC, ESL, counselors, principals, all the way down to coaching staff and child nutrition, teacher assistants, those type of positions. So, these are current positions. They do include Title I and equity positions. And again, vacancies are counted because they are positions. And so, these are just the positions that we see. If you look on page 14, you will notice that the middle school one is a combination, really, of Butler Middle and Holly, since that's what was requested in the study. But, they are together. So, the middle school number for Northern Gramble is not going to change in that chart if Northern Gramble is the second middle school. But, you will see some changes in that first middle school number column. And then, of course, the efficiency reduction, because there will be two schools, again, you'll see athletic coach reductions. You won't need, you know, two football head coaches, those types of things will be in there. Custodian numbers will change, some of those numbers you'll see. Again, Title I positions are not included with that because Title I changes annually. And so, we never know from year to year exactly how many positions are covered by Title I. Any questions about these so far? Okay. So, on page 15, looking at the facilities, again, you'll still have fewer buildings, so there won't be as much upkeep. Better utilization of space. Right now, we have many empty classrooms between our two campuses, and so that would decrease. Centralizing the services, child nutrition, libraries, all of those things would improve. And then, of course, we can invest in our infrastructure a little bit more. If you look on the bottom of page 15, you can see Butler Middle, current Holly, Northern Gramble, and then what the new Holly capacity would be if you combined the Northern Gramble and Butlerston numbers together. Page 16, again, very similar, just goes through what the needs are at the different schools for roofing, HVAC, and the total master facility plan. And then, that current Holly campus net gain is included. It's the same number that you saw before in that one.
For purposes of, like, information, like, on page 15 where you have the chart, can you say, like, new middle school instead of, because that's, that's going to get really confusing.
Gotcha.
We can make that change throughout the document.
Right, right. Because when I see new Holly, I'm thinking about the Creemore Elementary Campus, and so, I don't want to forget.
And that's going back to Mr. Peace's point earlier, too.
So, it's really the new consolidated middle school?
Sure.
Yeah, I agree with that, too, because you've got to, people will be offended, you know what I'm saying, to have, you've got to combine them. But, yeah, let's give it your name. I mean, you know, you have to, you guys, the other side is going to be very upset if you keep calling it one thing or calling it the other one. But, and you, you know, both feel better if you call it something else. I mean, but, you know, I don't know who makes that decision.
I think we do. I think we do.
But, no, you know, maybe we should have something out there, some suggestions, you know, like, that is completely illegal, having something, it feels like they're in the wrong.
No, I totally get, yeah, because you're basically saying it's better for two schools to come together and have its own new identity, instead of one school claiming it as theirs, and then the other school feeling like, what are you talking about?
Ms. Williams had asked about capacity, and, you know, on page 15, we have the total number of classrooms that are available, but we can add the capacity by students also, so you can see that as well. Because that's where, we had just really focused on making sure we had enough classrooms, and we do.
Yes. So, on page 16, just gives you an overview, again, of that investment in resources, the master's facility plans, what each school kind of has for the next five years. And then, under that, is other infrastructure considerations. So, there are some, you know, some gym things that they would have, football fields, baseball fields, softball fields. There is a note here that currently with GC Holly Middle School students playing indoor sports at other facilities, the cost related to this is around $7,400, in addition to what we already pay for officials and coaches and all of those. Any questions about those sections? All right, I will turn it over to Dr. Han.
Speaking of perfect timing. So, in looking at your options for the middle school boundaries, I kind of alluded to this one a little earlier, but your option one is just our current middle school boundaries with Holly and Butlerston combined in option one. So, your pros there, it just utilizes our current boundaries with no changes, there's no feeder pattern issues between elementary and middle school, there's no building capacity issues, no impact on Northern Gramble at all. Everything for them would stay the exact same. Your cons, again, Southern End, we're not going to be able to share buses. I think this is where your real potential for more buses could occur, primarily because when you look at a current Butlerston Middle, they have four buses, and three of those are double runs, because so many of our kids right in the city area ride the buses. We're able to do that because the school is right there. We lose that ability when the school is eight, nine miles down the road. And then, same staffing, we're going to have to use a lot of strategy there. While the students do fit in the buildings, it is not an equal balance. You can see about a 250 student difference between the two schools in option. Are there any questions regarding option one for middle school?
I think the only question that I have is, and I know we haven't gone over number two yet, but so far, this study talks about merging the two Southern End Middle Schools, and obviously, we can do that because of capacity. Is there a benefit to trying to equal out those capacities, like?
Sure, and I tried that in-
Or should we just not touch?
Well, I tried that in option two, and again, this is a geography issue. So, looking at option two, if you look at that on the map, that star indicates where the current Gramble Central is. So, you can see, when I tried this with option two, the numbers didn't change that much. So, the only option, if you wanted to see in option three, as I could come down 15 on the other side and bring some of that blue to red, the issue is, is there is not a lot of kids in that area. So, again, you're talking about coming all the way down towards Wilton and Tar River to make the Northern End more like a U, an upside down U or whatever. But, there's not a lot of kids in that area, so you're going to have to come pretty far south to get to 700, 700, or whatever the case may be.
It's sparsely populated.
It's very sparsely populated.
So, that option two for middle school matches option three for the high school.
Right, so we just, we took a stab at changing it to see if it would impact. And this is going all the way down to Range Road again, and there was very little, I think it's a net gain of six for Northern Gramble from the first one. So, again, that just shows you how far south we would have to go to get to equal capacities, or we'd have to come down on the eastern side quite a bit to get to that balance number. We can certainly show you that option, but there is going to be a tradeoff for that as And just trying to keep the new consolidated middle school within its own boundaries because of where it's located, kind of impacts which words we use. I mean, even in this option, you have kids living very close to that middle school that will not be going to it. But, we can certainly attempt that if you'd like.
Would you like to see a third? No.
Am I clear, make sure I'm clear on this. We don't know for sure, obviously, how many buses and how many drivers, but you don't see a tremendous variation amongst the-
I'm not anticipating any, because the same kids who ride a bus now will ride a bus next year, outside of some high school kids who get their driver's license and start driving.
Okay.
So, I'm not anticipating, I don't think in any of these options we reduce busing. I think at best, we remain status quo. But, there is the potential with losing those double runs, because even now, Gramble Central and Butlerston don't share buses. There are only two schools, middle and high, that have their own. And it just, and we send quite a few Gramble Central buses into Butler to pick all these kids up.
Do you see a lot of the routes being a lot longer, or just somewhat longer?
I'm going to use the word potential, because I don't know. But, when you look at where current Gramble Central is, and now, you know that a lot of our kids live in that southeast corner towards Franklin County, towards Wake County, it's going to take a number of buses to go that far. Those buses leave current South Gramble at 6:00 AM now. So, you're talking potential 30.
That is about the year.
And we could, and we could even get creative and start that middle school bus at the current South Gramble. I mean, it's just really going to depend on who says what, you know? But, there is potential for routes to be longer. And that's, you know, just like we don't know who's going to sign up for what, or what options they're going to choose. Folks may choose different options for transportation as well.
Well, and that's, the bottom of that map, that's not even the southern part of that.
Yeah, it was hard to get it in there. So, there's a little bit, but, you know, we have, we have a really high concentration there towards Franklin County, Wake County, in that corner. So, it's going to take more than one, it takes more than one bus now to go there.
I live down on the chalkboard, yeah.
So, I don't want to paint things as going to be super easy, and the reality is, it could be quite the opposite.
For the kids living in the northern area up on the Virginia line, you don't see this as being any major effect on their bus times as much.
No, because we'll have to add some buses to the middle school that will come down to that Range Road and all. But, we'll just make it work.
But, the Virginia line totally-
No, that won't change.
Shouldn't be any problem.
That's rough as it is now, so.
So, Chris, this, this is the current Northern Gramble, right?
Yes, yes, no changes at all. There's no impact to Northern Gramble at all in option one.
That red is the red.
That is their current red, yes. Option two was just to see if coming south changed it any, and it really didn't. And again, if you wanted an option three, you're going to have to come pretty far down on the, on the northern, northeastern side to obtain that balance.
I do have a quick question, Dr. Winmore, before we continue any further. There was a period of time, like, back when we, when I first rotated onto this board, about optimal versus actual versus current capacity. What numbers are we, are we still, do we still, I mean, I guess my question is, is like, when we're looking at all these, like, capacity numbers and stuff, are you, are we still operating with, like, preferably optimal, or are we still, are we, what are we doing?
That's a great question. I would still peg it to optimal, but even more so, I like looking at classrooms, because, you know, Courtney, when she went and laid eyes on, you know, what, how many actual rooms are there, you know? Because you start getting into a situation where the class size, the, what you consider an EC pullout room versus a regular classroom, I don't know. We can, and to Ms. Williams' point, we'll add back in the optimal capacity numbers, but to me, those vacant classrooms are where we can really hang our hats. Because we don't want to be in a situation where we're having to add no room next year. That's just horrible. But, I will say this, you know, it's going to be a shift, because our people are very accustomed to having lots of space right now. I don't want to say, no one is spoiled, because it's certain- I don't want to say, no one is spoiled because it's certainly, you know, they're making good use of the space. But, as Courtney said, there's some teachers that have two different classrooms, you know, one for one type of class with maybe a computer lab and another that's more like a traditional classroom. So, they're going to have to sort of get back to the old ways of doing things. Anything you wanted to add about that, Courtney, and your observations of going around?
I think that's very accurate. I mean, there are areas where, you know, guidance counselors have entire classrooms instead of offices. So, they have an office and a classroom. And that's not necessarily needed space. It's fine, but it's not needed space. ROTC programs that have their regular ROTC classroom plus another classroom plus two additional classrooms in a different area of the building. So, there's plenty of opportunity for us to be a little more efficient in our use of space.
Ready for Ms. Heinz?
Again, fiscal responsibility section looks similar to the Gramble Central. I'm not sure if I stated this in the Gramble Central section, but the figures here only reflect state, local, and capital outlay funds. So, basically, state and local funds. It does not include our federal funds because they vary every year. It does not include child nutrition because we always have to back out those child nutrition costs anyway. And of course, fund aid is grants as well. So, just wanted to be clear that this is only state and local funds, including capital outlay. These costs, the annual costs for Butler STEM Middle School come to just under 3.5 million. The anticipated savings, the, excuse me, the anticipated ongoing costs after this consolidation would be about 2.5 million. And of course, here's the current state funding for the principal. The potential annual savings is 810,000 for, again, this is closing Butler STEM Middle That is simply what the savings, the potential savings would be, 810,000. Of course, we look at that relocation costs of the furniture, any kind of furniture materials over to the consolidated middle school. And that's, looks at 40,000. And then, the carrying costs. And of course, we've already accounted for the rebranding of Gramble Central in the other study. So, I do not have that additional cost in here. The, and then, of course, we have the carrying costs. If we hold and maintain Butler STEM Middle, again, we're looking at that 25 percent of their ongoing cost comes to just over 65,000. And then, on page 24, you can see that, what that looks like over time. In year one, we would anticipate a net savings of just over 700,000 with the closure of Butler STEM Middle. And then, year two, an ongoing, we would see, and with the carrying costs, we would see a net savings of 740, just under 745,000.
Ms. Heinz, I didn't mention this before, but when you referenced the principal, the funding for the principal...
Yes.
That's not their salary. That is the total cost.
Oh, total cost, absolutely. Benefits, everything. Everything included.
Yeah. Just for those that might be listening and watching.
Yes, please, yes. That is not, thank you, that's a very good point, yes. Any questions about the fiscal area?
I think for me, I'll be eager to see more of the Butler STEM Elementary since we're obviously not planning on getting rid of the Butler STEM Middle School property.
Right. So, we'll look at that and have that.
Yeah, because you're absolutely right. There's going to be that potential avoidance of the maintenance costs for that. And then, if, again, you have to figure out, what would you do with that property? Would the county of Butler be interested in it? Would the county want it? Another potential big windfall to address the backlog of needs, especially at our two high schools.
And that is important to include is the potential savings of the master facility plan. That's not in here at all. This is just looking at prior year costs and accounting for that. So, that would definitely be a significant difference.
Some board members, that concludes all the information we have for you with these two studies. And again, apologies about not having the elementary school stuff ready, but we will get that turned around as quickly as we can. Our plan is, we made a lot of notes. We will make edits to these drafts. And feel free, in the meantime, to email us, reach out. I don't know, Ms. Williams, is there a particular process you want to set up if there's more feedback or anything?
Some of the things we said we wanted, if you could get them to us, we can also have them for the meeting. But, in the meantime, and then, if anyone thinks of anything else, we'll have it for the next meeting. Ms. Heinz, I'll put you on the spot right now. When we start adding this up, the savings, if all that went as you said, what is that total?
Well, it was 1.7 and 800, so that's about 2.5 million, 2.6 million. And if you remember, we're using 4.1 million in fund balance. And we've already found some savings in that use of fund balance for this year and moving forward, which is important then. But, that takes a significant chunk out of that use of fund balance.
That's a recurring.
And that is a recurring savings, yes.
So, that's the operating side only?
That's operating only. That does not include the avoided costs of the savings.
Or if we were to sell the property?
Correct.
Thank you. Anything else? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Oh, no, you're a guest. You're good. I thought you had a question.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.